And so it is makes a great pleasure that I introduce our next speaker, Steve White, who is an original alumni of the ground.
I want to thank this city council for the support of the arts. And I want to harken back to the city council in 1970 that had the art, that had the art of Loski open and then a guy named Joel Wax. And they took mercy on a little theater on Nono full of art that couldn't get open because we didn't have parking. And they decided that the arts were more important than parking. Oh, well, that's the day of today. And so they gave us a waiver. And because of that, there's the grounding that has been around those 50 years and has interfered thousands, thousands of people. And I want to thank this city.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for this, this wonderful day, grounding's day. I've been a member of the ground for about 16 years, two of these alumni. The only thing that might be a problem here would be whether to ever be confused with groundhog. But we will continue to persevere and repeat doing what we do until we get it right. In the world of improvisation, I'm sure this year there is some improvisers. We always say yes and simply is to go with the affirmative and add information, move things forward. But put it another way, never destroy the other person's spirit as you create. And that's what I think also the groundings is about. Now, I'd like to please introduce Maranu Man, one of our groundling staff.
Hi, thank you. I'm a second generation native of Los Angeles. My dad was born here in 1916. I love Los Angeles. In the early 1970s, I started to take classes with Gary Austin. And that's all the groundlings were at that time. And here it is 50 years later, an institution. When I first went to Saturday Night Live, nobody had heard of us. And I got endless teasing from Belushi and Atroy and Chetty Jay saying, what's that group you come from, the Groundhogs? It's like, yeah, thank you a lot. And here we are, the farm team for Saturday Night Live. Will Ferrell, Maya Rudolph, Kristen Wiig, Melissa McCarthy, Tilk Hartman, and countless others have shaped the style and tone of comedy today, and I could not be more proud. Thank you so much for this incredible honor.
Yes, and with that, I want to say thank you colleagues. And so with this resolution, we are
That's USC's lobbyist. He's talking.
As the grounding's day in Los Angeles, recognizing their legacy, their impact and ongoing contributions. So please join me in honoring the groundlings' exceptional journey and all the joy they bring to the city of Los Angeles.
I don't think Kevin wants to talk with me.
Councilwoman Soto Martinez, I may, as a young man in the 1990s, I worked on Melrose Groundlings. It's always been part of my adult life, and I just want to say thank you for bringing up the laughter to the city of Los Angeles.
So Martinez, if we can have a quick presentation. Hi, thank you so much, President. Well, a good vibe goes from, from back there. Please come on. Sorry, the face, sorry, the face. Yes, and Councilmember Hight is also behind me.
I know that's bad.
Thank you so much. Good morning, once again, colleagues. I'd like to start off by saying, Mabuhay. So to begin our, to begin our presentation, I'm pleased to introduce Moni Dionisio to sing the Philippine National Anthem.
All right, so we saw Kevin DeLeon come back. He got a bro hug from USC's lobbyist. And now he's back here, we're doing typical celebrations. Philippines. Oh, yeah. Kenrod kind of sucks. That's Kevin DeLeon's friend. And then Kering is facing like seven felony charges for his wife. Double dealing on real estate and him getting her health benefits while he was still married to another woman. Still has a shot here. So that's City Controller Kenneth Mejia right there. Moving back into popular American. And we like Kenneth.
Thank you so much, Moni, for your wonderful, beautiful voice. Thank you so much, everyone. You know, I'm a council member of the 13th district that represents the historic Filipino town. It's always my honor to be part of these presentations whenever the Philippine community comes together. I'm joined today by Filipino dignitaries, community groups, and city employees as we uplift, honor, and highlight the incredible impact Filipino Americans have made in our community. As a former labor organizer, it's a very personal thing for me because we know it's important to recognize the role of the Filipino leaders and their deep connection with the Latino community, specifically in the labor movement. We know leaders like Larry Iteon and Philip Ferrer Cruz, who organized alongside Festa Chavez and Beloris America and so many other Filipino and Latino organizers of the Delano Great Strike in 1960. And this created a deep and
That's why we gotta make more scandals. Some people have been trying to make scandals harder though than others.
So today, when I think about the essential workers, I think about the Filipino healthcare workers.
Pretty sure that he is actually a police officer. We're still working on charring that up, but his behavior is like so suspicious. And then we have one person confirms that they believe he is. And he actually looks like an LAPD officer at Watch the Rogers.
Who are actually on strike right now as the Filipino community continues to lead so much of the fight for economic and social justice.
It's They look no American history.
What that brings to Los Angeles. As part of today, and as part of today's celebration, we have the Jane Beard winning chef Lord.
They can come and go. I say please, you see Emmeral. I don't have view of Kevin though right now. We're gonna try to get Kevin here later.
This chance to appreciate the contributions of the Filipino community that are far too, that are far too overlooked. And now I'd like to bring up my fellow colleague and friend, Councilwoman Hight, to also share some remarks.
Appointed Councilwoman Hight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Soto Martinez. And thank you, Mr. Chair, colleagues. Filipino Heritage Month is a time to reflect on the rich tapestry of culture, history, and the contributions that Filipino have welcomed into the fabric of our nation. And specifically, the contributions of those who are in the community are incomparable. We see it in our neighborhoods, from the small businesses and chefs and restaurants that offer taste of Filipino to the festivals that celebrate the beautiful culture of the heritage. The Filipino community has been an integral part of American history since the 16th century. As we reflect, as we reflect on Filipino heritage, let us remember the remarkable leaders who have paved the way for us. Just like my colleagues said, the contributions that trail
So this is another USC lobbyist. This is former State Senator Martha Escuchia. And she is USC's VP of Government Relations.
I don't know who else has stood solid there who liked that, or my mother would not have if you could follow in our, our, her friends. Also, Josey Sol, writing his inspired generations, incredible school to learn, whose stories highlighted the Filipino-American experience. These individuals not only fostered rights, but also fostered a sense of pride in the entire Filipino community. As Angelina, we're blessed to have this historic Filipino town in our great city. And I got like a little bit of burger. As one of the 50 coolest neighborhoods in the world, inside a one-track shop for everything you need. My love, ladies and gentlemen, is food. So if you're in a Filipino town, you have to stop by Home Guide to get some delicious milk tea and head down to the park's finance for some incredible barbecue with the Filipino place. As we celebrate Filipino Heritage Month, let's continue to commend ourselves for fostering understanding and respect for all of them. Let's uplift and support women of ensuring that the stories of our diverse backgrounds continue to enrich the nature of our nation and the heritage of our city. In closing, I invite everyone to engage with the values of Filipino heritage, whether it's through food, music, art, or conversation. Let's celebrate the incredible contributions of Filipinos in Los Angeles and Seattle. And let us continue to build a future where every culture is honored, appreciated, and celebrated. Thank you.
Sergeant Duarte.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Hight. Next up, I'd like to introduce the first Filipino-American to vote electorally in the city, but hopefully not the last, City Controller, Kenneth Mejia.
Yeah, that's right, we're gonna vote Isabel in. KDL's going out, Harado's going in. Make that soon.
Magandang magapaw. Good morning. Mabuhay. My name is Kenneth Mejia. I am honored to be here to represent our Caba Baya, our people in here in City Hall. I want to thank Councilmember Soto Martinez for giving space today, to Councilmember Heather Hight for speaking as well. Also want to give a shout out to one of my family members, the president of the base, Lolita Mejia. Just kidding, we're not related. The Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees. And raise your hand here if you're a Filipino city employee. And let's give a round of applause for our several more citizens who did ahead. In the City Controller's office, third of us are Filipinos. Who knew that Filipinos like accounting, right? And also want to give a special thanks to our Commissioner, Susana Reyes. My deep out of my hat, I do wish to have a little, a little kick. So everything is A restful year and congratulations to Chef Maynard Barra. Give it up for him. He is one of And last night, we also celebrated in the fourth floor, thanks to our general manager, Streetlight Miguel Sanger.
Hugo Soto Martinez, colleague of our, our Councilmember.
Filipino owner, Oyuwa Hospital, and Sifan, and also Chef Maynard. So, you know, the spirit of this month's Filipino American History Month is Bayaan. And by Bayaan, this actually means we're coming together as a people, as a community, and we're giving back and we're not asking for anything in return. And when you think about the people who have come here, when our ancestors came here in Morro Bay in 1587, and all the struggles that have come since, whether it's the work we've done in the labor movement, the unseen nurses, the amazing entertainment that we bring through our dancing, through our
Former State Senator Martha Escuchia, who is a VP of Government Relations at USC.
And that's what, when I am doing my job as City Controller, I want to make sure that I'm giving back to the community and making sure people have that information to make the best decisions so we can help this community. And I hope as a city council and at City Hall, that we can continue to do the great work in the spirit of Bayaan. And so I say, yeah, so thank you and happy Filipino American History Month, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you so much, Controller. Our next speaker became the first Filipino-American L.A. County Commissioner in 2019, and now serves on the Board of Public Works. I'm pleased to introduce our, everyone, our Commissioner, Susana Reyes.
Good morning, Madam, taking lahat. Good morning, Mabuhay. So for over 30 years, October has been designated as Filipino American History Month. In commemoration, the first Filipinos arrived in Morro Bay in 1587. And this month was also chosen in celebration of famed Filipino American leader Larry Iteon's birthday. It's important, it's important to honor and recognize the contributions of Filipino Americans, both past and present, who have exemplified the Bayaan spirit. Repeat, Bayaan, which is, which means community spirit, locking arms, being together in our diversity of Los Angeles. More than half a million Filipino Americans called L.A. County Home, the largest population of Filipinos outside the Philippines. Filipinos have played a significant role in L.A.'s history.
Duarte's done time on the scooter.
And since the very beginning, L.A.'s large and vibrant Filipino-American community have continued to make major contributions to the city's history, culture, economy, and much more. And therefore, every year when we hold our Filipino American History Month at City Hall, we honor those of Spanish leaders, as there are many more here in the city of L.A. For these reasons, it's important to spend time this month sharing stories and reflecting on the Filipino-American history that is often forgotten or goes untold. Now more than ever, we must come together in celebration of the many diverse communities that made Los Angeles a better place. I also want to recognize Love Base because Love Base is an icon with the major affinity organization that has fostered the advancement of Filipinos and other minorities in city services for more than 14 years. So let's have a big round of applause for the state today. We're also honoring the very important Filipino Americans. For our proud Filipino Americans, it brings me great joy to see so many fellow Filipino Americans serving this great city, day after day, delivering outstanding services and rising in the ranks to become great leaders. L.A. is a place where everyone belongs. Let's keep it that way. And as councilmember, so we're in the Maibaka, which means, which means by all, live on, Mabuhay, everyone. Thank you.
Love, that's my favorite chant. I actually learned that on the second line with Filipino workers in Hong Kong. So thank you for bringing it in. Next, I'm pleased to introduce Lolita Mejia, the president of the base, also known as the Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees.
Honorable City Council President, City Council Members, Council Member Hugo Soto Martinez, Commissioner Reyes, Deputy Council General Ali Campbell, my younger brother, City Controller Jared Mejia, honorary chef/word singer, and to everyone, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the base, Los Angeles Filipino Association of City Employees, as we proudly recognize that over the Filipino Americans pretty much in Los Angeles. This is a significant advance to reflect on the rich heritage and massive contributions of Filipino heritage, not just here in Los Angeles, but throughout our country. Filipino heritage of the long, long history, in the 1987, when the first public center in Morro Bay, California. Over the centuries, we have played a beautiful role in shaping this nation, from Filipino farm workers, who helped to guide the labor movement, to the nurse attenders, health care professionals, who conceived the service community's nation-wide, to the many city employees who work with dedication for the residents of Los Angeles. In Los Angeles, Filipino Americans have been instrumental in building bridges across communities, advocating for equity and justice, contributing to the economic, cultural, and social fabric of the city. We see this in our everyday life, our growing businesses, and our commitment to public service. Filipino American History Month is not just a celebration of our culture, but also a recognition of our resilience and our labor dedication to making America a better place for all. As the honored past, we must look to the future, continuing to empower the youth to embrace their heritage and carry forward the legacy of those who came before us. Thank you, City Council, for this important recognition and for giving Filipino Americans a platform to highlight the difference of our contributions to Los Angeles and beyond. Thank you to the city staff of Councilman Soto Martinez, Nate Barnes, Natalie Ruiz, Martha Delarque, and Pia Porst, who are all for making this event possible. Parang sanay and mabuhay.
Thank you so much, Lolita. Next, our, now our next speaker is the winner of the 2024 Jane Beard Award for Best Chef in California. Gold winner, which by the way is also in District 13, renowned senator.
Good morning, Maganis Maga. Thank you, Council District 13 and Family Association of City Employees for this incredible honor, especially during this Filipino American History Month. Being recognized by the Jane Beard Foundation as the best chef in California is not just a personal achievement, but a victory for Filipino cuisine. It is an humbling moment, not just for me, but for every Filipino who has every dream of sharing our cuisine with the world. To my family, my Creole team, and our Filipino community, this achievement is ours. Thank you for your support, and let's continue to show the world that we're just in the area of our food and culture. Mabuhay, buwan lahat.
Thank you so much, Chef. We've made this entire city of Los Angeles very fast for your contributions. And finally, we would like to welcome the Deputy Council General for the consulate of the Filipino here in L.A., Marie Almiñ Capo.
Honorable Councilmembers of the city of Los Angeles, particularly Zakuia, or Piamano, of the historic Filipino town, Hugo Soto Martinez, and of course, Councilmember Heather Hight, thank you very much for making this possible, Mr. Tamelia, and our officers and members of the L.A. Filipino City Association of City Employees, or the base. It is my honor and immense pride to accept the Los Angeles City Council's proclamation commemorating Filipino American History Month and to stand next to these outstanding Filipino Americans. This is an important recognition in view of the presence of thousands of Filipino Americans working in City Hall and their important contributions in ensuring the smooth delivery of the city's services, whether they are in the front lines of public service or diligently working on the many mundane but necessary tasks that keep City Hall running and humming. I also accept the recognition on behalf of the approximately 150,000 Filipino Americans who call the city of angels home. Filipinos have lived in Los Angeles for over a century, and I am pretty sure that there is no L.A. neighborhood without a Filipino in it. However, our Filipino Heritage Identity have oftentimes been obscured because perhaps we have been so good in adapting American society. As such, your proclamation today also honors the often overlooked, but nonetheless equally important role and invaluable contributions of the Filipino-American community towards strengthening and enriching Los Angeles' economic and cultural diversity. As we celebrate Filipino American History Month, we want to showcase our vibrant cultural heritage and communities which thrive in this great city. We want to celebrate the contributions and accomplishments of Filipino Americans, not just in the healthcare field for which we obviously excel and are famously famous for, but also across a spectrum of fields, in the arts, business, sciences, politics, among others. And so I thank again the city council for the recognition, and I thank the base for representing the best of our Filipino identity and values in the city of Los Angeles. Since 1982, you have been a steadfast advocate for the over 2,700 L.A. city Filipino employees by championing their economic, educational, and cultural advantages. And if that's not enough, you also advocate for coworkers from other minority groups, thereby creating a stronger and more inclusive workplace. Maraming salamat po sa lahat at Mabuhay.
That concludes all our speakers today.
Thank you, Councilmember Soto Martinez. Just want to say thank you to you and Councilmember Hight for recognizing the many contributions that Filipino Americans make, not only to the city, but especially to the ones that help us run this city every single day. Happy Filipino American.
Councilwoman Ryan and I would like to present this resolution that was passed here at City Council officially recognizing a bold and Filipino American History Month here in the city of Los Angeles.
Pitch your time.
And as a reminder, we will have some food in the bathroom, folks, to enjoy.
Filipino food. All right, so I got Hugo. You got Controller Mejia, and then in Dodger Blue, appointed City Councilmember Heather Hight, who was appointed following the Mark Ridley Thomas scandal that involved USC. And then we have, I think, still VP of Government Relations at USC, Martha Escuchia, sitting right here. Oh, here's McCosker. McCosker actually served for the police union. He's an attorney. Oh, we got another presentation coming through.
Good morning, colleagues. And Dr. Juan Mira, who celebrates the Lithuanian annual good food day. The theme for Food Day 2024, building bridges to healthy food access.
Oh, healthy food access. There were like a lot of food tents out on the South Lawn. Everybody loves food. They also love money and power. I don't know, I'm gonna get a shot of Kevin today. I think Kevin's gonna stay away from Where are in their doctor's room?
Together, we can continue to build a Los Angeles where everyone has access to healthy and affordable fresh food regardless of when they eat it. I would now like to introduce all of the last guests, Executive Director at Los Angeles Food Policy Council, who will chair our organization.
The Los Angeles Food Policy Council is a collective impact organization working at the intersection of nutrition security, economic development, and environmental sustainability. We are here today in honor of Food Day, an annual global initiative aiming to improve nutrition, food quality, and food systems. For the last 13 years, this council has recognized and acknowledged Food Day in Los Angeles, which served as the largest civic engagement event focused on Food Day in the city. This year, we would like to recognize Councilmember Ellen Zizemana as our sponsor of Food Day and Councilmember Tim McCosker as co-sponsor of this year's event and resolution. We have also partnered with the LA County Department of Health to create a series of events under the name Bridging, Building Bridges to Healthy Food Access to celebrate Food Day with diverse food leaders and advocates and highlight City Council leadership on key food access initiatives as well as recognizing outstanding good food champions in each district. Los Angeles Food Policy Council understands that ensuring communities have affordable and accessible culturally relevant foods requires solutions rooted in cross-sector partnership to drive food system change. We are proud to have partnered with the city of Los Angeles and numerous partners to support consumers, small food vendors, or the growers.
John Lee, the Republican, is presiding.
And farmer markets on efforts such as Good Food Purchasing Program, Healthy Markets LA, Good Food Villes, Farm Fresh LA, and Errie A. Consentism Zone Policy. The legislation of street vending established EBT at all farmer's markets and the Food Recovery Grant Program. We also like to acknowledge our 2024 Food Leaders Lab cohorts, who are here today and represent 30 community-based leaders who are committed to driving their passion for food justice into meaningful civic engagement. Our mission is to establish a food system that emphasizes equity, health, and sustainability
I think we must have more presentations coming.
to more promising food future. We call for a collaborative effort involving policymakers, consumers, and communities to prioritize healthy food accessibility throughout our food supply chain. We look forward to your continued leadership and partnership on ensuring an equitable and accessible good food in Los Angeles.
Yay, food. Everybody loves food.
I would like to thank my colleague, Councilmember from the City Council Fund, Councilmember Tim McCosker. Ready to show love. Appreciate you, Councilmember.
Wait, he moved up.
Happy 13th Annual Food Day.
Food Day. Everybody loves food.
I'm honored to share this space with Councilmember Nanas on this issue, and we have the Los Angeles Food Policy Council here with us today. I so appreciate you and everything you do in the web fire. Thank you so much. Let's get to the Food Policy Council. Today, we are hosting the 13th Annual Food Day Celebration.
This is USC's other lobbyist here, and actually, I know him very well. This is the Director of Local Government for USC, David Callejones.
All around the country, bring Americans together to celebrate and enjoy good food and push for improved food policies. The 2024 theme for Food Day, Building Bridges to Healthy Food Access, Building Bridges to Healthy Food Access. So unfortunately, so many of our communities, especially other communities, where we don't have access to good, healthy food, and I appreciate all of the groups are trying to
David, wave at me. Martha, I think.
And build this to the critical need for healthy nutritious food access in every single one of our neighborhoods. Part of the solution is to make our food system hyper-local by supporting small family-owned businesses and farmers who contribute to local.
So I think they're here probably because of the food presentation.
In that spirit, I am honored that I Heart Watts is one of our top five good food champions. We're going to have them here, and they are part of that. And they have a whole bunch of folks coming and visiting.
I don't know if they're gonna talk to me or not.
Together, I Heart Watts is a brand of SBCC and Watts. It's a collective. The I Heart movement, SBCC does this all over at One Five for sure. But I Heart Watts is within a collective of community members and neighborhood groups that started an initiative to reclaim green spaces in Watts, nestled in Wilmington Avenue between 93rd and 95th Street. The new beginning's garden space managed by our Mark Watts. The garden not only is located in the heart of the Watts community, but remains extremely engaged and dedicated to volunteers and residents.
McCosker basically represents San Pedro, but his district includes only ten of Watts, both of which are very Latino and then very African-American and very poor.
They are found right at the heart of our neighborhoods, and they provide a sense of community for everyone who comes to them. Think of what they do. They promote health. They promote good food. They promote community engagement. They promote safety. And what else do they do? They reduce food waste, and they reduce the plastics. I mean, think about all of the things that we're working on. We're working on community health, community safety. We're trying to.
Kern's back. Organized there. So USC is in Kern Prices District, in the night district. There's Tracy Park.
Think of how great that is. That network of gardens can help us share the planet, actually, the same human being. The planet would be just fine without us, right? We can save ourselves, we can save the health and safety of our communities by dealing with this important issue. That's why I'm excited to be working with Councilmember Nanas on updating the urban agricultural and center zone, Trump's gardening ordinance. Vote for that. That's coming. We're gonna make sure our new garden event is really, 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 really good. These are not just gardens to look at, these are farming. You'd believe it was just that, but these are also gardens that are meant to be used to conserve our communities.
The other week, people on the east side were accusing USC of undermining their neighborhood council to get their biomedical research building approved.
And we can do that, we can do that together. As the city of Los Angeles is home to some of the.
See, everybody's cleared out, and so approved, everybody here is for the presentations. There's actually, I don't see any other journalists here. I've got my press pass on. I don't know if I'm gonna get a shot at Kevin DeLeone today. I was considering just like going up there and like trying to confront him about his lies and deceit, but. See if we can get him on the side. As long as he's on camera, it's all good. It's one thing to come here and yell and scream, it's another thing to come here and actually work the system. Man, there are a lot of presentations today. So like, Los Angeles has a massive homeless crisis. We're going broke. LAPD is costing more money than ever, in part because they keep screwing up, and we are on food still. Oh, Filipino food, Mexican food, LA has good food. Got the politics going on over here. Oh, they're moving up. So if you get Los Angeles Times, you'll know that USC was recently accused of running a VIP admissions program in which donors got to give money in exchange for walk-on positions on collegiate sports. Five USC employees actually took the fifth in federal court to avoid self-incriminating themselves. And Mrs. Scusha here works for USC. She's their VP of, I believe, State Government Relations. Oh man, here comes Councilmember Monica Rodriguez. Monica feels that having to spend money on homelessness is like having a gun to her head, but nobody would ever put a gun to Monica Rodriguez's head, not especially the police, because she loves them. So there's Monica, M. Rod. It's a nice brooch. So if you're a city council member, you make $224,000 a year plus benefits. It's a pretty sweet job to have. But again, Los Angeles journalism is dying. In fact, people are resigning from the LA Times because they don't trust it. So everybody's on Twitter complaining about how the LA Times didn't endorse Kamala. I got news from the LA Times, it's been a lot more corrupt than just that for a very long time. Monica's going back. She has to go sit up front. I wonder if there's a USC item on today. But again, money, power, corruption. Hand in hand. One hand washes the other. And that's how the game is played. I want you to have fun. He's supposed to be up there. This is more USC people.
Council District Nine, Brookdown LA, South Los Angeles.
Sure, who he is. I don't think I can move up yet. So basically, there's nobody else. Average people in Los Angeles don't have time to go to these meetings, and then they only hold the meetings during the day, which means the only reason people come to these meetings, it's when they have a special business item to attend to. Otherwise, this is the least involved city government you can imagine. Basically, people in Los Angeles don't have a say here. It's all about power, it's about control, and this is about a lack of actual true democracy happening here. And so when people try to undermine a democracy by doing corrupt and illegal things, catching them is very, very difficult. So that's why we're back on livestream, because I got some people to catch. So. I think it's gotta be at least 11:00 AM now, and we are still on presentations here. So if you're wondering why policing is bad, there's so many people living on the streets here, people can't stay in their homes, and the government is not actually trusting anything, this is in part why, because we come here to do presentations, not to do actual governance.
Council District Fourteen.
No, not Kevin. Not Kevin. I think Kevin should have to answer, right? Did he know his staffer was following Isabel Harado's daughter at the shopping mall? He literally defended his own staffer, going to her rallies, asking her a leading question, recording it, then giving it to the press under false pretenses, and then the police union has turned those into advertisements. So I'm kind of with Isabel, you know, F the police, but like, the dirtiness that is Kevin DeLeone, who's sitting over there, we can see Kevin, here's Kevin. Kevin is ridiculous, and Kevin is who we're after here today. He's figured out who I am because I asked him a question the other day, and he did not like it. That's actually on camera, but if I get another chance to talk to Kevin here today, it's gonna get hot up in here, because he does not want a camera on him. He doesn't want reporters to talk to him unless he gets to control the narrative. Kevin is up to no good lately at all. I mean, it's one thing to like want to expose your opponent, right, for like seemingly being against the police, it's another thing to have your staffers following her and following her kids. I just got a dirty look. So we're still doing presentations. And mind you, the city is in a financial crisis, they have burned through half of their reserves. The controller was here earlier, the controller has been flagging that, and the right wing in Los Angeles is getting very critical of how this government is being run, and this has been going on here for a very long time, this is nothing new. But at the same time, whether any business is actually happening here, you know, outside of recognizing people who are righteously doing good work, is getting a little bit questionable. But yeah, I think we're public as it right now. So no, did Kevin DeLeone know his staffer was going to follow Isabel Harado's daughter? And did he know his staffer was going to record her under false pretenses at an event? I think people got a right to know. So more people are showing up. And you gotta understand, Los Angeles has 50,000 people, actually, maybe 40,000, 50,000 living on the streets, and this is what we're doing right now. She rolled her eyes at me. All right, so there goes Kevin. Kevin is really good at smoothing. Here he comes again. So Kevin is cool with his staffers going to his opponent's events, asking her a leading question, recording that, then giving it to a newspaper because he thinks it exposes the truth, right? But if we expose Kevin back, that's unfair, right? So say like, LA Community Action Network is actually suing Kevin DeLeone because Kevin DeLeone won't provide public records. His office doesn't answer questions, they don't respond to public records requests. And. Here he is. Kevin, did Martin Perez follow Isabel Harado's daughter? Did you know Martin was gonna make that tape? The tape of Isabel Harado saying F the police, right? So it was Kevin DeLeone's staffer, and Kevin DeLeone told the LA Times that was okay for him to go to her event, ask her a question, record it, then give it to the West Side Current, and then Isabel Harado confronted him at Dolores Mission Church and accused him of having her daughter followed at a shopping mall. So I think Kevin's got some things to answer for. That's the press's job, right? Ask these types of questions, but if we can never get to the guy because he doesn't respond to emails, he doesn't respond to calls except for when he wants to, how do we hold him accountable? Yeah, we need more accountability in this city. Yeah, I mean, I think it just, you know, raises a question of fair play, right? Is Kevin playing fair in this election or not? And is Kevin just doing dirty stuff to get reelected? Especially after he's actually literally in court suing the people who recorded him. And mind you, we're allowed to record. Oh, so I think here's the USC item for today. And Martha there actually pimped money on Kevin's opponent. So Martha did. So Martha actually gave money to Wendy Correo and Miguel Santiago to run against Kevin in the primary, right? But now Kevin is getting literally hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on his reelection campaign by the police union. They put $100,000 on door hangers, they just put another hundred-plus thousand dollars on digital ads, using that recording of her saying fuck the police. So I think we're gonna have a really nice presentation here. But Kevin admitted that his staffer did it. He praised his staffer for going to the event, asking her that question, recording her, and then giving it to the West Side Current, which then fed into the Los Angeles Times. But of course, they don't ask Kevin, right, if he knew the staffer was following her or if he ordered it. And we don't want to make any assumptions about just how dirty Kevin is, but Kevin is pretty dirty. And he's on tape being a racist. So USC is here for Kevin. Kevin's got their Boyle Heights campus in his district, so that's the relationship. Kevin does not want to lose his reelection campaign. Kevin is actually quoted in a book by real estate developer Isaac Shomop, saying he thinks the home should be put on 747s and flown to Israel to work on kombuchas. That book was published by Simon &amp; Schuster, and the developer who wrote that book actually turned against Kevin because Kevin did not want to go for his massive rebuilding center. So they're starting to get annoyed with Audit and with Wayne Svenner. They're mad that they're getting gadflied. But if I come here and I do this as, you know, credential press, right? Like, oh my god, don't invite the press, you know, like... Oh, is Antonio here? Oh my god, we got the Mariachi band here. This is a great day to come to City Council. That's right, Antonio Villarogusa, former mayor of Los Angeles, is running for governor. I gotta get a picture of this. This is insane. So Kevin is just going all out on this. We have the Mariachi band here, and this is picture-worthy. You know, I mean, free press, right? This is just campaigning in City Council. Kevin wants to win his reelection, he will do anything, and... So if the City Council member has his staffer, right, following Isabel Harado's daughter, is that illegal? She's 15 years old. Because that's what he's accused of doing. He got accused of doing it in a church, and he wouldn't answer, so... We've got the Mariachis here. I gotta get a better picture of this. I mean, City Council could be calling for a ceasefire in Gaza right now and said, this I mean, I don't understand what the difference is between this and a campaign event right I don't know if I've ever seen a Mariachi band here before. Oh, we're here to remember Richard Alatore. So basically, very few average people are here. This is all a big show. There's former mayor of Villarogusa right here. I think this guy has got security. So the mayor is here.
Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, you're very powerful and poignant words with regards to the person. I want to bring up a young woman who represents the valley. She's been always very hardworking, but also of the East Side, because of her roots in the East Side of Los Angeles as well. Does it bring up our very own Councilwoman from 2008 to 2011?
Alright, so here's Mayor Bass.
Just to qualify that, you know, I've often said I'm a rather low in deep East Side roots, because my family, when they came to Los Angeles, settled in the, on the East Side, in the northeast, in South Park, in Highland Park. And it was in that world, as a young child, that came from the San Fernando Valley and spent many weekends on the East Side. I got to admire and watch a man by the name of Richard Alatore. It was through his leadership and example that informed a young 18-year-old in San Fernando Valley of what she might aspire to become. And it was as a friend and a mentor that I attributed so much of the work that I've been able to do on the Los Angeles City Council because of that friendship and mentorship that I have the privilege of reaching out and getting support from in Richard Alatore. I'm so honored to be part of this presentation this morning, because I know if not for Richard Alatore, I would not have a seat in the northeast San Fernando Valley to be a representative in my community today. It was his selflessness that shaved off a piece of his own district in redistricting that afforded this second Latino council seat in the city of Los Angeles in the first council head district. And I was so grateful that his continued work in advocacy, that it was through his leadership that a third Latino seat was created in the northeast San Fernando Valley, which was first occupied and served and represented by Richard Alatore. This is no accident. This was work done with intentionality to say that representation matters, and he was unapologetic about being that voice for a community that was so often ignored and overlooked. But it wasn't just for our community. He was the advocate and the original coalition builder. It's why that in his services, you have the likes of Maxine Waters, of Willie Brown, of all the history from the Armenian community, that he was a bridge builder and someone who was unmistakably strong in the righteous pursuit of making sure that we all had a voice. And I am forever grateful to have known and called a friend of this great man, because it's not just today that we will honor his legacy. We bear the benefit of his work each and every day, and we make no apologies, I make no apologies, for fighting to preserve and protect that very legacy. Because that is what we were elected to do. God bless you, Richard Alatore. We love you forever.
The City Councilwoman of Los Angeles has very powerful words, the history that we have with Richard Alatore. Next, I want to bring up... Alatorre. Next, I want to bring up someone who served with him. He was also a councilman for City Fourteen.
This is the only times right here. So, Los Angeles Times, David Donn is where he's coming out. So now there's two reporters here. There's David and I.
You know, I've said at various junctures in my life, whenever I had an opportunity to break the glass, that are here on the shoulders of Richard Alatorre.
Fucking clown.
Richard Alatorre should have been the first Latino mayor of Los Angeles. The city wasn't ready yet.
Fucking racist.
I know that everything I've been able to do in my life, I've been able to do because there was a Civil Rights Act, because there was a Voting Rights Act, because people fought to open up that door. One of those people leading the way was Richard Alatorre. And so I couldn't be more honored to be here back again in front of a new generation of leaders. Thank you for acknowledging the contribution of this man, a man who will be remembered, a man who will be honored in his memory in the years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Next, I want to bring up what we call the things and that divide that they've reached together from the West Side to the East Side, Catholic churches to synagogue.
Great boys.
They've worked together, they've struggled together, they've debated together, they always came together, holding up the city.
Eighty billion dollars to pay settlements of fucking kids.
Supervisor of the West Side, that was also in my own home.
Oh, yeah, so it is.
I live in the period for the group from yesterday's night's football game. First of all, thank you, the Alatorre government for asking me and Cosmo DeLeon, asking me to be a part of this. I think I'm the only person here who served on the city council with Richard Alatorre. Eight and a half years here and a number of years in the empty year before. I wanted to. But he sure was a wisdom churcher when he came to get things done. And the way he got things done. He was on a mission. His mission, as we already discussed, was repeated on voting rights, on civil rights, but also on employment opportunities here. That was chronicled in the L.A. Times opituary a few months ago about how he came in here with a mission to make these cities workforce, especially the public safety, part of our workforce, look like Los Angeles. And he was underwhelming about getting that done. And he did get that done. It's still a work in progress, but it started with Tom Bradley and it got executed more by Richard than any single person that I know. So the mission he was on guided me. The second thing I wanted to say, when Richard passed, I got a call from one of the newspapers who wanted my comments. And I said, "The only thing I can think of is that when he was my ally, I couldn't have had a better ally. And when he was my adversary, I couldn't have had a more worthy adversary." And I don't know, and then I went to my shelf and took off the shelf Richard's book, Change from the Inside, which by the way, I think is a very important book and should be read by everybody who's here and anybody who's interested in L.A. movement, the Chicago movement, and the role he played in it. And I went to look at it, and he described it to me, and he said, "I never had a worthy adversary." And so it kind of connected the dots. He and I sat across the room, and those days, when Richard was facing the council presidency, and Richard and I could look at each other and signal to each other what we were thinking, whether we were rolling our eyes or raising our arms. The fact of the matter is, there's an old saying around here in Los Angeles, and there's some old time and stuff here, that when Richard Alatorre, John Ferraro, and I had been on something, it was a Latino. Because everyone pulled the line. When Richard and I, when John couldn't get together on something, then it was a problem. But the longer we served together, the more we appreciated each other, entrusted each other. And I knew that Richard and me preferred vice versa, particularly in California. That's a great, great piece of currency that all of us can come and public life has. The last thing I want to say, I want to talk about Richard, Richard's character. John Wooden, a great good C.L.A. basketball coach, wrote one of his books, that your reputation is what other people think of you. Character is who you really are. And most of us have got to sit in this horseshoe and negotiate and arm wrestle and collaborate more often than not on things that make this city and this region a better place.
Criminal enterprise.
We got to see the character of each other quite clearly, quite clearly. And Richard Alatorre had character. He showed it in his public service career. He showed it with his relationship with his family, his gifts. It showed when life dealt him a bad card and he overcame that bad man with grace and with resilience. The man had character. And so the last time I was at this podium, I was retired from City Council, I believe it's the last time, and I feel the same way.
Antonio just smiled.
Yeah. It was up to me. Anyway, Richard and I had a great relationship here, and even better relationship after both left the office. And one of the great gifts that I was given by him was the opportunity to talk to him for his way. And just to shoot the breed of the beast that he's made. He had character. He was somebody who made a difference. He's consequential in everything he did. And when Richard acted, when Richard opened his mouth, people listened because they knew he was serious and that's how he had character. So thank you for making the apartments and inviting me to the apartments program. I miss Richard. I miss when he was still alive and working together. I miss him even more now. Angie, thank you again. And we say in our tradition, may his memory be a blessing. I'm certain that it is a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to bring up a progressive civic leader that we have on the great civic theaters. I have a huge footprint, we first saw him top of it. Has a huge footprint in ours, in the country, not just in the broader great state of California. And he's also an author of several works against the Latino civic cultural culture. Let's bring up our great George Block.
I'm too honored to death Angie has to set you horns about the great Richard Alatorre. I've been around so long, I feel like I'm part of the city family. I remember following John Ferraro, who was president of city council. And who could ever forget the Emperor, what could not, your relationship. And then Zed, as he was chairman of the Latino Council, and Eric. For some reason, some people think or thought that Zed and Richard didn't get along. But that's actually not true. As Zed records, I think that a lot of their work for the city together. And for Richard, people mistaken, they go, "At least that guy." Not true. As Zed mentioned, you go to Bull Heights, where they have their temples. And if you go to Ego Rock, you have a conservative, white district. It really did represent the macrocosm of the city. Redistricting in the city of L.A., something that Richard had enough to mentor. I dare say that many of you in the council, as Monica says, would not be amongst today were not for the great work that Richard did. He had relationships in the West Side, the Valley, South Central. He did not have the controversy that we have today. Maybe there was something from Richard Alatorre. MTA, an important agency in this town, where not Richard, the first chairman, nor the U.S.C.D. and NTA work in this today. Finally, for fun, Richard loved USC, the one who passed US structure on, USC structure, and he loved USC other places, football, basketball. Out of the time so hard, I left and drew my season tickets. I managed to say I never saw him ever again. One day, there was a big thing, and I asked if I could buy tickets. He said, "Oh, no, brother, not take so." So finally, I just want to thank each other like all the others. I take this time to give you the honor of a great man, Richard Alatorre. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. Colleagues, next I want to bring up state legislative representative, who represents the northeast part of Los Angeles, the first Salvadoran American, Mexican woman, she's hold that position, but she currently has right now in the state of Southern America.
So Wendy ran against Kevin, but she crashed her car because she was drunk.
Is that the DUI girl?
Yep. That's correct, Candita.
That's her. We have felt an enormous presence around us, leading us, but it continues to be here home. We continue to follow, serving in elected offices in the South of us. And I know that his children, and I'm very grateful to be friends with him now, specifically Melinda, who I work with, who is respecting, pursuing. When you share public service, oftentimes there is a sacrifice of family. And your family is all that you put on hold to better improve the community that you represent, to better improve the state that you represent. And there's great sacrifice. And so I just want to say, you know, more than family, for their sacrifice, for sharing from great land, the city of Los Angeles and of California, love to let this happen. And continuing to make a difference every year, making progress over this incredible ceremony, celebration of life, really, celebration of life, for great land and to our city and to our family. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for the wonderful presentation. Next colleague, I want to bring up an individual who had a huge influence on the whole entire city.
Thank you, sir.
A judge of ridicule. And knowing that representation matters, and that we're ashamed of our social media platforms, we always write, and even when we're those who have never won, no voice in the state of California, was the former chair of the California City Latino Legislative Caucus, Senator Richard Block.
So this is like the Latino political class, like dipped in here.
She crashed her car. She got drunk. And she still went to drive out, and she lost to Kevin.
Play basketball, I can play basketball. During the walkouts in the sixties, I began to hear the name Richard Alatorre, followed by Chicago Alatorre, then the replacement in the East Los Angeles Community Board. And it was Richard who was in relationship with Erdo Camacho, another dear friend of the family. As the protesters and leaders of the Chicago Movement were being arrested, it was Richard contacting Erdo Camacho to tell these great, great community leaders out immediately. Richard grew up as an organizer. I was part of the Team Post Program, the Moral Poverty, when the federal government was engaging and investing in communities. It was also the opportunity for me to engage back then with David DeSavita, very prominent today, being one of the most successful community development corporations in the country.
Then invite to deal.
Richard, I served with Richard Estac. In nineteen eighty-two, I lost my first election. And for those of you who have asked me that, you know his pain. And it's very easy for individuals to reject, productive a better word, and not believe. Richard did not deserve me. He did not. Instead, he hired me and gave me the opportunity in nineteen eighty-six to run again. And I was successful. And I'm very grateful because he believed in me. But the characteristic that he showed and demonstrates at time and time again, even back then, loyalty, being your word, making a difference for community. And so as he came to the council, I had the opportunity to serve. And I served sixteen years in the Democratic Party, my last four years as the Senate Majority Leader. And it was Richard blueprint of reemproachment that laid the foundation for people like myself in the positions to empower and bring to the public policy discussion from our community. It was Richard Artoris, Maxine Waters, Mike Bruce, and Willie Brown that created the opportunity, who understood the value and the power of the office, to make a difference. And so Richard laid the pathway, and I, as Chair of the Latino Caucus, began to recruit and identify individuals. In that first cohort, six, six members were elected and changed. And the importance of having presence there and influence there was very prominent at only days one. And as Chair of the Latino Caucus, because of the support and wisdom and experience that I saw from some great leaders, from all walks of life, I was able, upon my retirement, to take the Latino Caucus from seven members to twenty-four members. And I'm proud of, and I'm proud that I'm probably one of the, one of the members who supports women to office. I'm very proud of that opportunity I'm able to deliver. From a personal note, we're in the John Ferraro. And I first met Danny Arroyo, is that who illustrated this system. And this is a personal thank you to my brother, because Danny was going to marry Libby, who is my is my wife. And we were together in this wedding, and Richard was going to be scheduled to walk into the church with the young lady who I was assigned to, and Libby runs up and says to Richard, "She's your partner." And so the rest is history, 40 years, 23 years later. Libby and I have been married, and so from a very personal, thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for not looking at about you. Thank you for taking on the issues that at times, as an elected body, you know are the most difficult and controversial, but a man who stays to his conviction and a man who is a man of his word. Thank you, Angie, for sharing them with us, and God bless you all.
Thank you very much, Senator Richard Altorre. We just have two more speakers here, but I didn't recognize and introduce a very powerful woman who would share judicial thinking as well to any county state senator.
That's right, this is the new second, I tell.
Hello, my name is Martha Sutia, former state senator and state assembly person. And I stand in the shoulders of Richard Altorre, as well as the shoulders of Richard Altorre. These men endorsed and helped women. They recruited women, they fundraised for women. And my political career really would have been nowhere without the two Richards. And in regards to Altorre, I remember that when I was running for assembly in 1992, somebody said we should call him, so I called him. And I said, you know, I'm running for assembly, and I'm glad to get your endorsement. And the only thing he said was, "Are you a Chicana?" And I said, "Yes." He goes, "Okay, I endorse you." Easiest endorsement I ever got. So Richard Altorre, you will always be my rey, el rey, y diva rey, no le vacile.
Congressman, as well as colleagues, representing Travis, representing Angie, his beautiful wife, his rod, representing Melinda, as well as Gerald, and all of his former city staff, as well today. I want to bring up Derek, who was a chief of the state.
I woke up this morning, and I'm very tired, to be honest with you. When I heard my dad back here, "Meow," when I'm tired, and I heard Andy's voice, "Meow," your dad will be watching, you better run, I'm tired. I wore a tie, and I looked at George, and looked at Kevin, and I looked at him, "No ties." Oh, man, I'm sure that's myself. Anyways, good morning on behalf of Angie, our brother Gerald, my sister Melinda, and our respected family, I want to thank city council president Aristos, and especially council member David Young, and my drinking partner, my dad. When my father made transition from the state legislature to down to the city council, he moved his body because he saw it was an opportunity for him not only to be closer to home, but also to have a very important impact in the Duglans and the people that he represents. He also had the opportunity to expand the expansion of Latino history in the city councils, others have mentioned, like he did Sacramento. He was in charge of 1986 and 1991, the House of Representatives, and with those brought in first Latina, Lauren Molina, and then the first Latino council member from San Francisco. In 1991, oh, I'm sorry. In both of those three partnerships, he also realized the importance of not only expanding Latino representation on the city council, but also the importance of cementing the seat held by African-Americans. He knew the college of politics was important, and all council members' voices were important. My father loved his horseshoe. He loved being here, working with his colleagues, fixing down for reference in the city of Los Angeles. He loved the congeniality, sometimes not congeniality, between the council members. My dad loved the council so much that after years, he left, kept on watching the council on Channel 35. And I can just add a couple short stories here. So where Councilman Blue Moon was staffed, my dad sat there, next to him was Hal Berthold. And those two characters together, for those who knew Councilman Berthold, they were funny. They, Councilman Berthold, they had a little stash drawer of junk food or little cookies and chips, and that was heaven to my dad's stomach. He liked their kids' stuff. And Berthold's role in council, every year, that's absolutely right supervisor, every year, those two talked smack to each other about a little romance, but also, also, when UCLA and SC played, it was Zed and my dad going at it, losing the game. So that was good. And then I remember one trick he played on when Councilman Alon got elected his first day. So my dad sat in that first seat, and my dad didn't want to give that seat, so Alon came in, and he was supposed to sit there, my dad said, "Oh, man, I couldn't get you five dollars." And that was a joke. And my dad looked over at that Alon seat, sitting in that seat. But that was my dad's character, Joseph. My father also learned about where he came from. He treated everyone with the dignity and respect they deserved, no matter their position in life. But most of all, he treated constituents with the dignity and respect that they deserved. He never forgot that he did the hard work of previous generations. His generation, the ones moving forward, have had and will have the opportunity to prosper. Our parents, grandparents, great grandparents, are the shoulders we stand on. I look to my father, I'm very proud of what he accomplished, and of the man and the father he was. I am proud of the opportunity, oh, is that right? I am proud of the opportunity he's given, countless other people, but I am most proud of, he never forgot where he came from, Bola Heights, East L.A., where in his heart, that's the way there, I took him to Crone's in East L.A., just before he died. And I'll never forget it. And that's what, for me, often I forget, a truly great role model for Latinos, because he was, as others have said, America's words, character of importance, voting was truly a great man. And again, I want to thank you and especially to council members, David Young, and Rodriguez farming my dad.
Thank you very much, Derek, for representing, and our fellow family, colleagues, thank you very much. One last thing I want to mention. We're a near member of the 30th anniversary of the massive competition, 187th March, where we had about 150,000 people. At times, the largest march in the history of California margin, the Vietnam War marches, larger than women's marches. It was massive against 187. You know, four main organizers, you know, four organelles, you know, Fabián Muñez, Foxel, Getafe, Hapos Medina, myself, and a former labor leader from 166, Gil Ceballos, who helped finance it right there. But Richard Altorre was a councilman at that time. And at that time, both were, they sounded like that. And it was Richard who got us all the permits, all the files, all the NPD, we could not have a possible. And there was a lot of elected officials, elected officials of color too, that were sort of recording, sort of getting, you know, the part of this march, you know, it's too odd, you know, you shouldn't be marching there. Richard Altorre was like, "What are you going to do? We'll give out the permits, we'll get a parking in Brooklyn." And it was, we'd not have a possible, we had that type of largest march in history because of Richard Altorre. Again, I love the stories from Zed, from Thornier, from Matt Mayor, from Wendy, from Borica, from Richard, from George, because the relationships he had were beautiful. Him and Willie Brown, and Maxine Waters, and, you know, Mike Bruce, and Martha Sutia, and Richard Altorre, they understood what the Bode White Sack meant, and what meant for Black, what meant for Latino, English. That there was no sort of urgency, no formality, and social media platform. They understood it, the behind scenes, they grew bread, and they did it all together for the harmony of all, because we worked together, we met together, and loyalty, trust, and care of it was amazing for them. But, you know, with our new president now today, you know, we have to remember, our who has passed, we're ushering in a new era, so we're very honored to be part of all collectively. So I just want to say, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I guess thank you both once more.
Yes, council member, thank you so much.
One last thank you, I got two thank yous. We're also, we're also, we're on Alita Street, in fact, right in the viewing station, but if you're very towards downtown L.A., you're right, that is Los Angeles Street. We're taking Los Angeles Street all the way to Arcadia, and we're going to rename it the Richard Altorre Legacy Way, right there. I'll thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, President, you know, for the support of our colleagues, you know, around the horseshoe, and also understand we're going to move forward in progress, right there. So I want to thank you, and I want to also give these flowers to the fellow family on behalf of all the council members who are present today. We give you these flowers to Andrew Altorre.
Thank you, council, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much, council members Rodriguez and David Young for bringing this presentation, and here, which you brought it, to this council is consistent with the legacy of council member Altorre. I just want to say to Mrs. Altorre and the Altorre family, thank you for thinking enough of us to share your brother husband's love with the city and the people of Los Angeles. It's a big gift, yes, please. This is a tribute to all of us, and to everybody who ever lives here or who benefits from what we've been able to accomplish, has council member Altorre to thank. I never actually knew Councilman Altorre, but I can remember watching on Channel 35 at night, and they replayed the council meetings. And when the camera would go over to that side of the room, and you'd see these just poetic struggles, is the way I would put it, or knock down, drag out fights, sometimes between Mr. Altorre and Mr. Berthold, that seemed to be the most common one. And sometimes Mr. Holden would get involved, and Councilmember Molina might get involved. But what was so impressive to me as a young person, notwithstanding what the issues were, standing for, you know, standing for justice, or what side of an issue he was on, Councilman Altorre came in the room as the sharpest person, and no matter how loud he got, or how much he swung his arms, he left the room as the sharpest person in the room. He held a standard for elected officials that I think we all continue to aspire to. And he can claim credit for one of the most diverse councils that this city has ever known. That didn't just happen, he is part of the team of people that built that. So thank you on behalf of the 4.1 million people in the city, people in the city of Los Angeles.
He knows where the Jewish money is. He like.
Just think, one day, that guy's going to be wearing stripes, prison stripes.
Richard associated colonial support with my political journey, offering valuable guidance and wisdom during my recantation of state council, I'll say this, Kelly. Who better to help like the African-Americans who represent majority Latino constituents than the man who was living a life of Polish resilience, being black and proud of his community? His insights exceeded mine, and so I'm grateful for the influence in my life. In his designation of Richard Altorre Day, all neighborhoods have now reflected on his remarkable legacy, he's a memorable legacy in his youth. Not just in his belly. Richard earned time as a godfather of people's politics, who was a fruit of dedication apart by both his sweat and tears. Whether as a civil member in Sacramento or during the impact of the COVID, Richard was political tight ice and a formidable champion for power, they've witnessed. He fought fear for equity and representation, ensuring that minority voices were not only heard, but also respected and celebrated. And the gladness of how holy he was, as the president will point out already, was his incredible courage, he was not afraid to step out, and he did. At a time when the grandstanding CNN America or any person, which is powerful, he's been talking, and he took those stuff. He'll also be remembered as, of course, civil battles have changed 52, you know, who have always been for, for his rights. And that's, that's the violence, violently material, the diamond, Altorre, by New York Searchers Act. But he was not afraid to break the rules of the street, the underdog, you know, champion of causes of justice, fairness, equity, dignity for all that. So he truly did this, as champion, as we celebrate the Richard Altorre Day, so he is always to remember and to understand that we need to have same kind of grit, courage, and compassion that's given by his people. To make sure that we're doing all the issues. Thank you, Richard, appreciate you.
They literally did zero going today. Presentation, presentation, presentation. This is Rick Cole from the Controller's Office. So Emilio succeeded Nury Martinez, who was caught on the racist recordings with Kevin Nellon.
Through all the noise, especially when there's a lot of people that love them and share them, so that is my wish for you, that you really get your time to really grieve it, and know that while you might have lost somebody, you truly do feel over time that you gained your angel. You're going to feel it, and I'm excited for you in that capacity. You know, they say that it was in 1985 where Mr. Altorre really revitalized the Latino pro power of the city, you know, and I was born two years later, 1987. And as I grew older, I, you know, started to make lists of who those Latino leaders were that were really making strides in the city of Los Angeles. And I kept hearing his name. And then when I wanted to run, the first time that I wanted to run was to represent both in school board capacity, and that was when I first met him. And very similar, also asked me if I spoke Spanish, asked me my parents' background, and every time I reached out to him through phone calls, there was three things that you always got to do, you were motivated, and you were inspired, and I love that he always makes me feel okay with being unapologetic about having admissions to representing my community. And you needed that, because when you do launch yourself, sometimes you feel like, you feel guilty, you feel like you're putting yourself in a place of privilege. But he reminded you that it's okay to be unapologetic when the end goal is to represent your community. So I thank you for that, and that will be my memory with him. But also, you know, I am weeks away from representing the community on the Metro Board, and when I think about transport and transportation, and what it means for the Latino community getting its fair share, he did a lot, right? He is the one that got us the gold line, and connected the East Side communities. And I hope to follow his path in connecting the South and the Marali in the same capacity. And I look forward to future generations then saying, where else is Latinos moved? And then we also connect somebody, somebody will connect to the, but I don't know about me, right? But he really was the first to really be unapologetic, to make sure that we also get our fair share for the transportation, not just here in the city, and I will remember him for that. So again, thank you for the presentation, and my friend, Emelmo, is forever loved, incredibly close to him, related to him. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this honor, Councilmembers, colleagues, for bringing into this family, by endless, fearless, results, this UANG, and the family. He meant a lot to me, my, my, when I first came to this building. He was chair of the, he was chair of the all-powerful budget committee. And I was the chief deputy city attorney, and I had to come in and stand and deliver and explain what we were doing and why. And I was a praise him. He was so strong, so tough, so raw. But I will tell you that I quickly learned that if he said it, it was going to come true. His character was evident in every single one of his moves, whether it was a simple move or a big move, and you could count on, you could take it to the bank. And those are the days of John Ferraro, and I didn't have the benefit of overlapping with that, but it was John Ferraro, and Kate Fulton, and Richard Alatore. And I have to say that this word unapologetic has come up, and it was so important for a young white guy from a different kind of life, to see someone who was called to serve a community, and made no excuses, made absolutely no excuses for laying it all online and doing everything he possibly could to lift up the community he was called to serve. And to a young white guy, it was really important for that example of lifting up Latinos, lifting up women, Latinas. And someone said, giving everyone the respect they deserve? You know, the House, I mean, there's a couple of others who respect the people they serve. He would call out people that did the wrong thing. And there's a few, there's only a handful of folks in my life who have done the work to me, who I, you know, hook up to, and who I try to live like, and fail every day, by the way. You can imagine my parents, and some of you are in this room, some of you are in this room, and one of you is not in this room, but we're honoring you today. God bless you. Welcome into the, into the loving arms of, uh, every. But I will say, one of my favorite memories, if you might remember, Danny, several years ago, Mike Bruce and Richard flew back to Notre Dame to go to a football game. I called a kid who worked for Notre Dame, and I got tickets, really great tickets, really close to the field. And so, because I got tickets, I sounded, and Notre Dame was out, and our quarterback fumbled the ball on the one yard by coming into S C V's zone, and a defensive lineman scooped it up and scored the touchdown to win the game. Can you imagine how miserable Richard gave me feel after that? It was unbelievable. But, I mean, it was so lovely, it was so fun. So, God bless him, and God bless you all. Thank you, thank you so much for everything that you all have done for me. And I wish I, would you, if it's over the full time, please send my gratitude to the members.
Councilmembers, I just want to say, as a former staffer here in the nineties, I had the privilege of working with Councilman Alatorre. And it was truly an honor to be near somebody who not only made such a huge difference in our city, but throughout the great state of California. So, I want to say thank you so much, Emelmo, this is glad to you. We appreciate you all, and you guys being a part of this presentation. Thank you, Councilmember.
Oh, he just looked at me. Kevin just gave me an eye, because he's worried I'm going to ask him a question. Hey, I'm going to keep my eye on you. Oh, that goes on your career. So, as long as you're nice with everybody, and you play ball, you can get away with murder here. In fact, Kevin got away with having his staffer follow his opponent's daughter at a shopping mall, and then asking her a leading question to record her at a campaign event, which then in turn gets used by the police union in their ads. So, Los Angeles is a dirty city, right? And this is all about show and tell. So, all due respect to the Alatorre family, this is politics. This is Latino politics at its finest here in Los Angeles. Kevin is over there joshing about. He saw me, and he was like, oh, fuck it, Zack. Oh, there he goes. He's just going to do his business here.
Thank you, Members, we are now going to have a public comment. Our agenda has been noticed for public hearing, and items for which public, uh, have not been held. We know today's meeting includes a common option for public comments. Public comments can be taken to a person in a council chamber, in a council chamber, and often via telephone. And first, we will brief you about public information that was also provided on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. President, as indicated on today's agenda, members in public wish to offer public comments, this call six six nine two five four five two six two, and use the ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six. Send that count, press town, give and contact for participants in ID. Once and then in the meeting, press down nine, request this speech. When a speaker will speak in another way, do not class, press down six to unmute. Again, call six six nine two five four five two six two, use the ID number one six zero five three five eight four six six. Send press count, press count, give and contact for participants in ID. Once and then in the meeting, press down nine, request this speech. When a speaker will speak in another way, do not class, press down six to unmute.
Thank you, Members.
That's not good at all. Not good at all.
That's Marquis. So, now the public gets to talk, right? Kevin's going to stay here. And what this all comes down to is Kevin is okay, right? When his staffers record his opponent saying something embarrassing, right? But when Kevin gets caught saying something embarrassing, that's not okay, right? Kind of a double standard. So, this city has a massive gaping budget crisis, and we've just spent the entire day doing presentations. Also has a massive homelessness problem, and this is what we're doing. So, Kevin's going to talk with Xavier Slavsky there, and it's like baseball. Pretty much everybody has left.
Speaking of projects you'd like to meet you?
All right, um, Mike Green's best, Perco's District Two, and I signed up.
Oh, Darren O'Callaghan.
Now, I want to talk about the Leans. I got no use with that. I, oh, I'm a comment to it. I got no use for the Leans. As far as I'm concerned, I don't seem keen to F. all the Leans. I just have no use for. I think they're a very aggressive way to go after property owners who are trying to do their best. As far as I'm concerned, folks, when I think of your Leans, they suck at dick like this. When I say they suck at dick, I'll show you when they suck. That's what I think of your Leans. Nobody's ever had the nerve to say the truth about the Leans after all these years. When I say something.
See, this is a sore case.
I'm just tired of these Leans. I don't think they're necessary, but we don't need to have them. They suck at dick, that's the basic thing about the Leans. Now, there's another thing I do want to say, and that's.
These guys, unfortunately, this is a free speech spot. Yeah, it's not even a basis accusation, because John Lee was involved in a federal investigation into Jose Wezar. They just never proved that Lee was actually knowledgeable that racketeering was occurring, including $1.5 million in bribes. So, Lee is actually suing the Ethics Commission for defamation, because he claims that he's being unfairly investigated.
Before we move on to the next speaker, if you sign up for public comment, if you please, go ahead and send it to the right.
Over there doesn't know what to think of this. I mean, I don't know either sometimes, but. Throw it at Kevin. You got to laugh at it a little bit. So, if Kevin has his staffer following his rival, and his staffer follows her 15-year-old daughter, right? And she confronts him in debate, and he won't admit it, is Kevin in any way responsible for that? Because that's what happened, right? Isabel Harado, his opponent, claims that Kevin's staffer, Martin Perez, who's a constituent services deputy, followed her at the shopping mall. And when Isabel Harado confronted him, he just avoided it. And then we find out, right, that Martin was in fact following Isabel Harado and recorded it. Did you know Martin was recording her? Did you know Martin was following her? I mean, McCosker needs to talk to him.
Hey, he just said fuck the Dodgers.
Speaker, if you mind, if there are any kind of other, or if there are any other speakers?
Um, all the liars and motherfuckers. All the time I can get. Because we all know the cost of special guards when they come to the healing of unconstitutional building a safety confrontation for violations regarding Leans. How many more fucking properties you want to take from us there? Look up them noodles. How much more property you want to take from us noodles? There's not more media in this city than to go and saddle off us white neighbors over the goddamn Leans. And I'm a man from a small school. Get your goddamn Dodgers.
All right, so, I'm going to go check out the party that's happening outside. I don't mean to mess with Richard Alatorre's legacy, but at the same time, Kevin is playing dirty politics. Yeah, make him go follow them outside there, because I'm trying to catch Kevin. Because you know what Kevin did, right? Kevin brought the food? Ah, yeah. I know, right? Ke- I mean, Kevin is raising so much cop money. They just dropped another $100,000 in digital ads to go after Harado with that tape they got, the fuck the police tape. All right, and then Isabel confronted Kevin at the debate, because, because Kevin's staffer was following her 15-year-old daughter through the shopping mall. And then he recorded her, right, after he asked her a leading question at his campaign rally, and that's now being used in the police union's advertising. He is so dirty, Kevin DeLeong. I know, I got his dirty, dirty food. And then McCosker's up there all like, whoa, you know, integrity, integrity, are you okay? But Kevin has no integrity. Yeah. Yeah, McCosker's got more integ- Yeah, McCosker's got more int- a little bit more integrity than Kevin. Let's go, let's go see if I can get some free food, right, off of Kevin. And then I gotta go to the homelessness hearing at the federal courthouse of one. Yeah, Kevin's playing games there, too. I know, they prob- they probably won't let me in, let's see. I mean, I, I got a press pass, you know, a legitimate press pass. Jumping everybody? All right, let's go see about this free food that Ida got. They gonna feed you guys, too? That's enough, can you? Here's Amelita doing some union politics. All right, so when in Korea, right? She crashed her car when she was running against Kevin DeLeón, against Kevin DeLeón. Because she was drunk. And now she's hanging out with them. Kevin's in the food line. I don't know if Isabel's gonna. I think Korea's falling in the line. You worried about the budget, Rick? City budget?
Everybody is.
Yeah, I mean, the city's spent half its reserves, right? In the last year.
More than half now.
More than half its reserves, and like, do you think that they can dig them out of this, some of this hole? Like.
Not in one year.
Not in one year?
We've been advocating.
Yeah.
For a multi-year strategic approach.
Mm-hmm.
That brings stakeholders together. Labor and business.
Yeah.
The only way they make this work is by everybody.
I agree, Rick. I'm Zachary Ellis, I'm a press member, I'm at Substack, I work with Gustavo Ariana. Yeah, and I will be going to the L.A. Alliance hearing later on. And of course, the city is proposing a bed reduction, right, from a 6,000-bed shelter system to a 4,200-bed system. Is that because, you know, we can't afford homeless shelters here?
I'm not, I'm not in this issue.
Yeah. I know Controller Me, he has been going to the hearings, you know, along with Ashley Bennett and then Inno and Chief Staff. And I mean, the website is very good, I'll give them that. It's, you know, a lot of work to get that.
Is to make this transparent.
Yeah.
And we felt that actually there would be greater public trust in the system if there had been more transparency. Um, there are some good stories to tell.
Yeah.
But there are also some clearly some improvements that that's what we need to make. And we're coming forward, which is why we're in this so important.
Yeah, everybody should vote for Measure A. I mean, otherwise, we're gonna be cutting money from homelessness crisis, and we have more people on the streets than ever before. And that didn't just happen overnight, right? People have been, you know, ending up on the streets now for probably a decade here. And there's a lot of questions about the invoices and spending and the audit. The judge, uh, the other week, we started getting the U.S. Attorney's office. And.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we've seen evidence of fraud.
Yeah.
I do think we've seen evidence of losses that just not being. And, uh, and it's been the whipping boy for both the city and the county.
Yeah.
And, uh, and either taking responsibility, and it's really their picture.
Mm-hmm.
Especially the county, uh, needs to step up.
There were a lot of finger pointing last week. And then the judge, uh, I read his order, he's trying to reduce the finger pointing and at least get them trying to work together, which is like a positive step. Because like, if we can't keep the bills straight. I have to, oh, yes, I, I, I've seen it on LinkedIn, but I haven't listened to him yet.
You should, it's really, really.
Yeah, I work with Ruth Ruthless, who's another journalist. Nighted away.
A series of.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
Because we got, you know, my friend Ruth and I have been pushing for CF 191020, which created a lived experience by reformation. It was passed by Mike Bond and Mike Chris Aristos in 2019. But they never implemented it so that we could have a feedback mechanism, right, for those being served, you know, as what works when it does.
I was mayor of Pasadena in the nineties.
Yeah.
We created just such an empty, we didn't call it lived experience in those days, but, but it made sense to us that we needed to immediately directly with the.
Well, thank you for your time, sir. Good to meet you, Rick. Ah, yeah. I mean, a, a free meal is a free meal, right?
Right, you better get it right.
Yeah, and I mean, there's a lot of hungry people in Los Angeles.
And what happens, a lot of hungry people, they don't realize, come here, come to leaders participate.
You might just get free food, that's right. And I mean, we had. We had, we had quite a few presentations. Today.
Four and a half?
Yeah. I mean, that's what I was talking to the Controller's office about, is we're in a fiscal emergency. They've blown through half of the city's reserves in like a single year.
About 3.8% according to.
Yeah.
Or maybe if they took their blinders off, they could see that we're in a red deficit. But we can't blame one individual, we blame the city as a whole governed by one black woman.
I mean, Caruso's already pointing the finger on Twitter. I mean, he, he's literally criticizing our leadership, saying he's gonna do a better job, and I think he's gonna run again in 2026.
Caruso should be running already now.
Cr- yeah.
Giving us the info, you know, so we can gain him more.
I want to hear, I, I want to know what he's gonna do differently. Because like, Caruso was pitching like a 30,000 interim bed shelter system without any plan to fund it. And like, you know, it doesn't take long to figure out walking around Los Angeles, right? There's a lot of people without housing here, and a lot of hungry people, too.
And that's the ones you see.
That's the ones you see, too.
Don't take away from the numbers of people.
Yeah.
Cars, people fast, motor, pushers, freeway.
Yeah.
Pass the freeway. None of this bullshit alley housing department.
And then Kevin keeps expanding 4118. I know, he's not gonna like this conversation.
He's gotta juggle.
He's gotta juggle things, he's gotta juggle the 4118 zones with the police union money.
He's gotta learn how to juggle, but just remember, in order to win.
Yeah, I, go ahead. We're, we're not, everybody's nice people here. Yeah.
You're a young lady, come on. I'm beauty before, uh, hospital. Get a piece of bread. They might, they might have dessert.
I mean, it takes a lot of energy to campaign.
Wow, that's a fight.
That was a joke, that was a joke.
I mean, if we're on a ship, that's the captain's table, right?
I mean, respect for Richard Alatorre, I'm just not sure that Kevin is exactly living up to the, the values there.
What do you mean? He didn't take, he hasn't taken one bribe, has he?
Kevin? I mean, Kevin and Kevin is.
The MTA meetings with hundred-dollar bills in his pocket.
Yeah.
Sorry, did, I brought that up today.
I, I think we just haven't caught Kevin with the money yet. Now, police union, though, they're spending on him, man. Two, $200,000 on ads to be Harado.
Over there on Mission, across from that top shop. They got a big old out, out front billboard, 14 by 48. Remember on Mission by the freeway. You got friends?
Did you see, one of the KID Elmo's go billboards got vandalized on Soto Street.
But don't forget, does he have friends or people you know?
Yeah, I mean, a dollar is a dollar, Kevin.
Gotta be, I need my nourishment.
See, he, he's got a good spirit, right? Did you, you just got to see that shake? But Kevin, you know, I don't know if he's quite Richard Alatorre. He can, he can try, exactly. It's.
But they don't wanna be like themselves.
Try, try, if it doesn't work, try again. I mean, people were mad at him, they're still mad at him.
You never, you never put people in a position that you hold a grudge.
Yeah.
Hold him accountable.
Hold him accountable. Well, he's, he's getting less accountable by the day, I mean, he, he's basically saying he didn't do anything wrong.
It's a nervous job.
And, and, oh, that his district is, is, is underrepresented, right? That's what the Attorney Journalist report supposedly says. I think they just want to take out Eunice. I don't know, let's see if Kevin wants to talk later, if he wants to do run and hide. That's all pretty good-looking food here. And I think this is probably donated. I don't think this is taxpayer money. I think this is donated money. What, what I was asking was, if Kevin was gonna be allowed into the redistricting discussions, right? Because he's on the tape, it triggers the investigation. So then it doesn't get to be everything, everything better up. Yeah.
That whole situation's already ended, so we gotta do.
Oh, he's still suing the two leaders.
Yeah, he's gotta sue, he's gotta sue Reedy because Reedy.
He, he's suing Reedy, but he's also suing the two killers. Uh. Sada. Yeah. Boom. Uh, this is to honor Councilmember Richard Alatorre, who is no longer with us. And so this has all been donated, I think.
That's what you do like that. Restaurant style.
I'll eat with you. All right, so. This is what you get at City Hall. I mean.
This is what you eat at.
This is what you at, this is what you eat.
Be nice, be nice. Ah, this is the critic table here.
You know, with the way things are going in this city, criticism is gonna be a legal sin.
Oh, yeah. The dictatorship of Kamala. She said, remember she said, that, that we had four years of a president that was, uh, what does she call him, a fascist? Really? I thought for a fact that Mr. Trump was a inventor of, um, good ideas, which is reform.
I mean, Sun Shion, uh, in the Washington Post, wouldn't take a endorsement position. The editor's down there resigning.
And then what did that dumb bitch Kamala say on the record? Oh, yeah, I worked at McDonald's, yep, I've never worked at McDonald's, I didn't have to.
Oh, we're eating, nobody's watching the government, there you go.
Yum, 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 yum. Yum, 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 Dusty.
Everyone's a Dodger fan in Los Angeles.
It's just, it's just a stunt. And the reason why it's a stunt, because who the fuck's gonna waste their whole income on, on one fucking game and be in debt? Like, like a college student. Never get yourself in trouble, huh? But Dusty. Be nice, don't bite my fingers, be nice. So what'd you think of the eulogy today?
It's pretty good, Paul, I think.
Exactly.
They're gonna do it, but certainly, as far as value systems around here, there's a lot of room for improvement.
A understatement, they need to improve, period. Too many, too many millions now, billions of dollars going out of this shit, my shithole place. Which means your grandchildren will never see a day in life owning anything in California.
No. I hardly own anything at present. So. Not too, too bad. You gotta eat to work. I think Kevin dined and dashed already, didn't he?
No, because the meeting wasn't over.
It was, yeah, he went back.
Yeah, the meeting wasn't over, so he has to go back in. Fulfill the quorum in order for all of those to go through.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, they have to redo it.
I'm gonna eat as fast as I can and get back in there.
That crazy lady didn't come out for chasing me. kept telling me sus, sus, sus. I said, huh?
I mean, if Kevin's staff would respond to emails, respond to CPR requests, I wouldn't feel like I need a follow-up camera. But, you know, his staff is the least responsive staff in the city.
Well, you know.
They're great at giving out food, though.
But you know why, right?
Yeah.
Hate to say it, they're Hispanic.
And we can get away with it.
Well, someone tried to tell you, they're Hispanic. Lazy, lazy fucking siss, don't do shit. David! You got the same pants from yesterday on, David! Hey, miss, if you're trying to go in the city hall, you have to go around the other side. I think she's lost. Let her walk in. It looks like Monica likes that big old flower on her chest, huh?
Oh, yeah, it's like a brooch.
How come they didn't, how come they didn't give us any like Dodger tickets since we all showed up to participate today, right?
There should be free Dodger tickets at the City Hall.
Mm-hmm.
Come to City Hall and get a Dodger ticket. Maybe people would actually show up.
It should be free. No, no, I think this stuff needs more chili on it. That's poison. What, they hit all the fucking chairs or what? What do you think, Dusty?
They're running out of chairs like they're running out of money.
Is the rice good? Is it sticky? Rice is right. See, but they pay the price for allowing us to sit there and get agitated for so long, you know? Lady cameras are just trying to take pictures of us. Look at that, an Indian lady, look, here, look. So Mommy, Monica's sitting there with the girl from the LAPD commission, huh? In the white? I didn't recognize her, so Greenspan pointed her out.
Russia, uh, shield?
Mm-hmm.
And I think I saw Karen pit up two more people? No, one more. One more nominee. But it seemed like a better nominee than the last one.
Yeah, because there was one empty seat and then one was leaving.
Mm-hmm.
Turned out, turned out. If I was understood and right, Richard Alatorre coached pop warners as to young youth.
Well, rest in peace, Mr. Alatorre. He brought a hundred dollars in the pockets.
Yep. It's too bad you start out good and you fucking start pinching your hands into this bad business. But here it's becoming a culture now. I brought you your, I brought you your food. You have to wait, Papa. This table likes to move too much. Chips, chips. More chips.
Little bit of salt, little bit of pepper.
Are you ready to eat extra? I usually don't add extra because.
It was a little bland.
They added it, yeah, it's good for the blend, salt. The Greenspan didn't want to eat this shit because they said, oh, they put lard in it. So what the fucking what? It has animal fat food in it. Now they're leaving the meeting. Meeting's over. He goes, Kim Chi.
Did you go back around? Why'd you go to courthouse?
What's going on there today?
LA Alliance, one o'clock on the deadline.
Was that the one from the other day, too?
Homelessness, man.
It's not gonna end, dude. That it gets too big. And you allow a population of people to get fucking mentally and fucking on drugs and alcohol, they're washed up.
Kevin's fighting with Hilda Solis over it. He actually wrote a letter to the judge. Kevin says that the county is not properly implementing the coordinated entry system.
That's good, that's good that you said that. It's probably all true. Everyone's fucking pointing fingers.
He entered in Hilda Solis's Instagram quote from the Isabel Harado debate.
Because, um, Hilda Solis fucked me over on that proton fake email. Took that cop. And I hope it's one of our young intern staff that did it. When they get caught, so I can fucking sue them and then put their ass behind bars.
Didn't you win before?
Not in LA, not yet. Fucking Bruce Lee.
Alright, I got one more taco. And we're back on business. Taco going down.
Which one? Battery?
Viva ta, viva los tacos.
Pause it.
Viva Kevin De Leon!
Woo woo! Gabby! Salud!
Him, I hope you grow up to have good food.
Who the hell is that with fucking Monica right there? Mommy's recruiting young, pretty girls now, but to make her look skinny or what?
It's culture! Oh, here comes marquise. I have to be done.
Qui, qui! Qui, qui! Qui, qui!
Cost some Jersey. Done.
You see this picture over here, wait a minute.
East cider.
That's right. East ciders. So, Richard Alatorre. Richard Alatorre was a believer in possibilities. He was the ultimate people's politician. No one before him or after him can get near to loans or accomplishments. Richard always did things to help people and impact the well-being of their lives, especially Raza. Richard could deal with chancellor of universities, police chiefs, heads of corporations, Los Angeles Metro Board, heads of countries, and tell what he needed and what needed to be changed. Richard made them aware they were not getting the money they wanted for their projects at the People's State of California, City of Los Angeles. People in his 14th City Council District, that's Kevin De Leon's, weren't treated with dignity, fairness, and justicely attended to. Richard held firm to his principles to serving the Mexican people and others during his time in elected office. Richard was totally grassroots politician. Richard brought the expansion, affirmative action at the universities, colleges, and realigning the political redistricting lines for Raza's representation and inoculation across the Golden State, the City of Los Angeles, and built the framework where it is now the Los Angeles Metro System. Richard brought us the world famous Mariachi Plaza on First Street and Boyle Avenue in Boyle Heights. Richard marched in 1984 down Broadway, locked in arms with then presidential candidate Jesse Jackson, and icon civil rights attorney Antonio H. Rodriguez, while it was then the largest pro immigrant rights rally, rights march in Los Angeles. Richard was the people's guerrero, advocate, defender, champion, and grassroots voice of the voiceless. Richard was the marker of possibilities who changed landscape of politics for Mexicans, for future generations, always delivering on his commitments, Richard Alatorre presente. Yeah, let's see some pictures. This is Latino politics in Los Angeles. A poem for Richard. "A tide recedes, taking Richard. Quiet shoreline, in stillness we walk, waiting, demanding his return. The tide rushes back, not emptiness surrounding with memories, rising more. We hear the voices he knew, singing his testament, carry forth the light, comfort, and others, find justice in all that we do. David Serrano, suave." Done. I don't know if I can get back in quick, and then I gotta go to court. Everybody got to eat. Council president's gone already. I don't know if I can let us right back in, we'll see. So you can come out, but you cannot go back in. So we're gonna go to federal court. Monica, who feels that the judge is putting a gun to the head of the city for trying to make them accountable on homelessness. Councilmember Rodriguez. That was City Hall. Superior Court. Let's stop here for a second. Alright, so hopefully we enjoyed, obviously, the council. Um, it's a circus in there, and part of the reason is, is because the only people who show up right are people who make a point of disrupting things. And then you also have, um, basically just controlled politicking going on. There's nothing democratic about what happens in there usually. It is very, very, very structured, controlled, just like watching a television show. And if you mess with the show, you get in trouble. Um, you know, I think, uh, live streaming has some real potentials here for accountability on people. You know, as far as like getting the interview, getting it recorded. It's one thing to record them audio, like I saw the LA Times, David Zonner was doing that. It's another thing to pit people on camera and go, hey, there's a camera in your face, um, have a conversation. And not necessarily guarantee, right, that they're gonna control everything, right, that comes out, right? Because like, anything that's uncontrolled is a problem. One of the ways they do this right is like, you can't go to City Council without the sticker. Actually, they're talking about getting rid of these, which would be a nice move, but you cannot go into the building without getting through LAPD. They hit you with the sticker, even if you're, you know, press, and this is the game that we play. So I might come back over here to City Council later on, see if I can catch people slipping. I'm gonna keep going after Kevin, though, but Kevin just figured me out. He knows that I know a lot about him and that I have questions for him. Like, why did the FBI want to talk to Kevin De Leon about County Supervisor Hilda Solis? So, we're gonna be doing more of this, we're gonna be having more fun here, because LA's got some serious problems. There goes the sheriff's van. Go to jail, you go to court. Sheriff Department takes you. And then. Federal Court is actually just right over here. But there won't be any filming inside federal court. But I'm gonna go to the LA Alliance court hearing, which actually I was talking about with Rick Cole there from the Controller's Office. Because this is really where policy is getting decided in Los Angeles about homelessness. Then there's this dynamic where they go to federal court, they get told to do something, and you have to come figure it out. Back here at City Hall, and they just complain about it. They go, there's a federal judge looking into our business. Why do we have to worry about this? Um, you know, what about those invoices on all that spending? Uh, Rick Cole from the Controller's Office there says that there's no indications of fraud yet. Um, but there are a whole lot of unanswered questions, and it's slowing down the audit, the judge ordered, and the mayor agreed to. So, City Hall, I might come back over here later. For now, we gotta go to federal court. But there won't be any filming inside, uh, there's no filming allowed inside federal court, unlike City Hall. And it is secured by the US Marshal Service and not by City Council. But if you come down here to City Hall, you're gonna notice one thing. People actually are sleeping out here. Here, here's the food festival that they had the presentation for. But unfortunately, despite the expenditures we're making, it's not enough. People are still falling through the cracks, and we have to do better. Like, it can't just be like, oh my god, homelessness. We need to actually be trying to make improvements, and we're not doing that. So, uh, my colleague Ruth and I, we've been really pushing Council File 19, uh, sorry, 191020, um, which would create a lived experience advisory commission. And actually, Rick Cole, who works in Pasadena, uh, on City Council there, and also for the Controller's Office here, so that's a great idea. So go Rick Cole. Um, people actually want to make a difference in Los Angeles, and not just want to watch business as usual going on. LAPD is over here. This is where the newspaper used to be. This is the old LA Times headquarters, but now the LA Times is a shadow of itself. But I'm glad I got that interview with Rick Cole. Because that's actually kind of scooping the story, instead of just letting them tell you what the story is, which is really what they want. And actually, the LA Alliance, which is the LA Alliance for Human Rights, what they did last court hearing was they came out here and they took a picture of these tents here that you see on First Street, between City Hall and the federal courthouse over here. And they went, guys, look, nothing has changed. Um, Los Angeles is just as bad as it used to be. And they were able to secure an evidentiary hearing to evaluate whether the city should reduce its homeless shelter system or not, because it can't afford the homeless shelter system, even though we can afford LAPD. So, we're gonna go to federal court. For the LA Alliance for Human Rights evidentiary hearing, this is the, this is where the newspaper used to be. And now, this is abandoned. They just pit up this fencing the other week. And you can see people are just living out here along the street, man. So very clever LA Alliance, they use pictures. So very clever LA Alliance. They use pictures, um, and the argument was, that's all they had. They had no evidence. The city was not fixing homelessness like they say. To go into the federal courthouse, you have to take your shoes off. There's also no filming inside. Um, there's no filming on the property. It is far more secure than Superior Court. This guy's waving. He's got, he's got his Tesla Uber. Welcome to LA. First Street. This is where the power is, right? This was the Los Angeles Times. That's City Hall, Superior Court, the federal building over there. Federal courthouse. And this is actually like the nicest courthouse around, pretty much. But the marshals do a pretty good job of securing it. People living in the streets. I've actually tried to get nonprofits to step up here and start trying to work with these people to get them into housing, but nobody's, uh, been a biter yet. I think that's just a shirt. Got the flag. Oh, I can't bring a camera in. No cameras either, so I have to actually go ditch my camera. And then come back, so. I hope everybody's enjoyed. I have to go ditch my bag before I can go in because I can't bring a recording device into the federal courthouse, like a camera. Um, they will nix you on that. It's to present, I'm sent to be to present people from, uh, prevent people from taking pictures, but I will come right back on here later, and maybe we'll talk about homelessness. So, I hope everybody enjoyed. This is one way to use live streaming for journalism. And this is Los Angeles. So I'm gonna go make trouble at the LA Alliance hearing, like, big time. People do not like me and my questions. Um, they are very smart. And that rubs people like Kevin De Leon the wrong way? So we'll see. I might take another crack at Kevin next Tuesday, but we're running out of time before the election. So. Just think, like, what if this was you, right? What would you wanna do? You guys, I'll catch you later.